A quorum.
Thank you. The time now is about seven oh three. And I call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. And as you heard, the meeting is being recorded. We've got a pretty full of agenda tonight, so we are going to be asking to follow a protocol to make the meeting time more effective. So preliminarily, this is Paul Shiner on the chair of the zoning board of appeals. And to confirm that the board members and staff or president can hear me. I want to have Bill call. Then them member names. So go for it, Bill.
Okay, I'm gonna go in order they appear on my screen. We have Leslie Bryant.
Yes.
We have John Corvall. Oh, I think I might want to check the the audio there. We have, I know you said you're here. Paige.
Are you giving any audio?
Okay, Brad.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and there's four and five is Paul Shiner, the chair. And let me just double check that I didn't miss any of our board. Anybody else? Let's see. Okay, that's what we have, so we can roll with these five. It's a good.
Now, as far as staff, we have a couple folks here from staff. Bill Memser is controlling a little bit of this zooming stuff. And we have Julia Flannery, who is also controlling some of it. Is there anybody else from staff? Or is this two of you?
I think for right now, it's just the two of us.
Excellent.
It's quality, not quantity. So, all right.
So this is the an open meeting of the zoning board of appeals. It's being conducted virtually on Zoom. And all speakers will be participating remotely. And then we will do the public comments also by Zoom. And you have the agenda posted on the website so that people can figure out how they can join. All the materials for the meeting are available on the town website. So let's, let's look at the first item on the agenda, but before we do. We need to have some ground rules for effective and clear conduct. We've got several cases tonight. I will, as the chair, will introduce each petition on the agenda. After which the petitioner will state their case. And after they conclude their remarks, the chair will put down the list of board members inviting each one by name to provide any comments or questions and so on. Staff will have the microphones muted until a person is called upon. And please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And for any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and please state your name and address before speaking. So first, the chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak in favor of any particular petition and then those in opposition. And then the staff will unmute the microphone so they can state their case. After stating their name and address, they will be given two minutes to state what they want to say. And as the evening progresses, if if the meeting of all three cases is not finished by eight thirty, we will consider continuing the meeting until the next regularly scheduled zoning board meeting, which is typically in a month. And so if we are efficient in stating our comments both for and against any particular issue, we should be able to wrap this up by eight thirty. So with that, let's go to the first item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes from May twenty third. We have a motion to accept those. Leslie is making a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the minutes of the May twenty third meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
Do we get a second?
Second.
Page seconds. Good. Do we have any comment corrections? Hearing none. Bill, could you go through the attendees, the board members and get a vote?
Yes, Leslie?
Yes.
John?
One.
Okay, Paige?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And let's see who's next on my list.
Should be me.
Oh, that's right, Paul. Okay.
So that's five in favor, a motion of approving the minutes passes?
Right, and if I can for our board. I am just calling you as you appear on the screen. It's, there's a lot of people.
We can shuffle that around if you want.
I don't know.
All right, the next, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. An application to consider the special permit renewal request of Tony Anne and Thomas B. Lynn Leiden to allow a home occupation, a hairdresser within their residence located at six Loring Ave, Maynard. The petitioner applicant, please. Where is that person?
Let's.
Are they on the phone?
They may be. They were, they stopped in this morning to prep. Let's see.
See one phone that's on.
Yeah.
They're muted right now.
Ah.
So I'm gonna ask to unmute. I don't know how that works on the phone.
We're looking for Tori and for Thomas Leiden. And if not, they were in this morning, I can think I could present. Let's see.
They, they, they did.
Yeah, well, in the meantime.
They were going to be on the phone. So yeah, why don't tell, let's see.
In the interest of.
Person.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the Lions have a hair salon that has allowed by special permit for about. Well, the earliest one we have is in, I believe, the nineteen nineties. The board last approved their petition. In, let's see, it was, I believe, twenty eighteen. We've had no issues with them at all. They have been renewing periodically as the board directed for various timeframes. Last renewal was of five years. And so staff can, they've been absolutely right on the money with everything that the board has requested.
And there is a however is that we need to have them ask for it in person rather than you being a spokesman for them. So we need to figure out where they are if they're on the call.
Oh, I think they are. I think that the I think they're on their phone. And it looks like they're just not being able to unmute themselves.
There is some. Julia, could you explain how to unmute on the phone? Are you?
So as long as they connected to their audio. They should be able to mute and unmute via their phone, depending on what type of phone they're on. I just don't know what phone they're on. It looks like it's. It may be a cell phone, but I have asked to unmute and it's, it doesn't seem to be going through. So.
Yeah, I did too. And it's, Mr. Chair, what I would suggest is maybe we could, we could come back to that as they get their technical difficulty worked out. They were in this morning specifically to discuss this with staff and I wouldn't want to at all.
And they didn't have any problems when they came in last time, correct? I don't think I was on that call.
No, they did. They showed up on Zoom last time.
Okay, so maybe if we could move on to the next agenda item and then come back to this one and see if they're able to come back.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, we'll keep.
So. Yes, please. The next item is a public hearing to consider the application of a special permit request of Leslie Zalamski to allow home occupation dog training based at a residence located in nine Pine Hill Road in Maynard. So the petitioner applicant, please. State, state what it is you want and are you on?
Leslie, are you on? Oh, my goodness.
I'm not seeing anyone with that name on. But that, you know, doesn't always mean.
Again, another one we spoke to in the last forty eight hours or so. Well, Mr. Chair, as you're see fit. And then for efficiency, we can, we can go forward and we can come back to these at the end, or we could go ahead and continue them if.
So while we, yeah, we'll go forward with the main part of the meeting, but for both of these cases, can you contact them? Either Julia or you, Bill, to just see where they're at?
Yeah, it's strange because they both were concerned about, you know, the, the technical side of this and connecting. And, you know, when they came in, they, they were, you know, that wasn't a concern. You know, logging in because they had logged in before. So we will contact them and see what, what happened. I think I still have their email, so I can email them while we're on this call.
Yeah, I mean, they were certainly have been responses, so we'd be out of character totally not to show, but we'll do what we can do, Mr. Chair, and we can move the meeting along and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, the, the resolution might be that we have to continue both of those until we get it resolved and have them come up next month. But hopefully we can get them this month. All right, so let's open the third public hearing. So now we'll have three open at the same time. How's that? So to hear all persons interested in a special permit application filed by Donna Dotson and Andy Morland, one twenty-three Summer Street, Maynard, the subject property at one twenty-three Street located in the S one zoning district consistent with section three two five of the zoning bylaws, petitioner is requesting a special permit allowing a trade shop use an artist's studio within the subject property.
Right, excuse me, Mr. Chair, if I may, I have to check the posting time. I believe the posting time because this was going to be. We didn't anticipate coming along this quickly.
Was, I think we were waiting, we were gonna wait till seven thirty.
I thought it was, yes, seven thirty. So we have fourteen minutes. What I would recommend, let's see, we've done our, our small items. If the, if you'd like to take a ten minute recess, we could do that. And I, in the meantime, we can check with the the.
Yeah, yeah, call, call them or whatever you need to do to see if we can resolve their issues as well.
So I have seven seventeen. I would think at seven twenty-seven, we could come back, prepare, and then we will open promptly at seven thirty with one, two, three, summer. And in the meantime, if we can get things straightened out, we'll try our best to do it.
All right.
I.
I've also heard if anybody's muted on. If anybody has, is having trouble and they're just on the phone. Star six seems to be the way to unmute on a phone. Star six. So if you're having problems, can you try star six and we'll wait a minute? And maybe we'll keep things moving and I'm getting quite a few texts.
I did email them, so I emailed Leslie. I don't have Tori. I don't have contact information for them, so.
Okay, I'll take care of that if, do we have Leslie or Tori on here at last? Okay.
So I am going to mute everyone until we seven twenty-seven. And just, should I pause the recording or would you like me to continue it?
I think it'd be, I think it'd be a good idea to pause it since.
Okay.
Describe this.
Sounds good.
Sorry, everybody.
I'm gonna start a recording again.
All right. So just, just to reiterate, it's an application to consider the special permit renewal request of Tony Anne and Thomas B. Leiden to allow a home occupation hairdresser within their residence located at six Loring Ave, Maynard. And so I understand we do have the petitioner online.
Yes, you do.
Good. Can you describe what it is you want? Is it a simple renewal of what you already have? Is it any other conditions you're interested in?
No, exactly the same as five-year special permit to have the shop in my house.
Sounds. Was, say again?
No, nothing.
So is there anybody on the call that wants to speak in favor of Tony Anne? And her hairdresser?
Don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition? No hand raising there?
That I see.
All right, any questions from other members of the board? Leslie has a question. Can you unmute Leslie?
So are you seeking another, did you say five year?
Yes.
Okay. And there have been no complaints, I assume?
None.
Good, okay.
Any other board members with questions?
Not seem like it.
All right, so are we ready to make a motion then? Leslie?
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the special permit to allow the operation of a beauty shop at six Loring Avenue.
Hairdresser.
Excuse me?
Oh, hairdresser.
Hairdressing. In the general residential, in the general residential neighborhood. Given the same rules that applied before. Be for five years. That customers are by appointment only, that there be no more than four customers on a premises at a time. That two off-street parking spaces be maintained. And that the business hours would be Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday from seven AM to one PM. And Friday, seven AM to seven PM. When a holiday falls on a business day, the shop may be open on the preceding day in conformance with mass general law. And that we make that for five years.
We get a second to her motion? Okay. Thank you, John. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Bill, you want to take the roll call?
Yes, I will. Okay, we have. Let me go on my screen. Paige?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Brad's on the list.
Brad?
Yes.
Leslie's on the list.
Yes.
And Paul.
And I'm also in favor of renewing the special permit as Leslie described it.
And for Tori, I think you're familiar with the process, but I will. Sorry, Tony. Um, we'll be in touch and we'll go ahead and start drafting the updated decision and we'll be in touch when you can pick it up from the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So then, as we go back on to what we were starting at seven thirty, it's now seven thirty-three. And this is a public hearing to hear all persons interested in the special permit application filed by Donna Dotson and Andy Morley. One twenty-three Summer Street, Maynard, the subject property is located within the S one zoning district consistent with three two five of the zoning bylaws, petitioner is requesting a special permit allowing a trade shop artist studio within the subject property. Now, the petitioner, I understand, has an attorney that's going to be speaking for them. Is that right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And I understand you have a PowerPoint you wanted to share. And I understand that was it Bill is going to be running that PowerPoint for you? Is that right?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Nesner.
All right, so the stage is yours.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. For the record, my name is Douglas DeShane. I am a attorney with the law firm of Finneran and Nicholson with offices in Westford and Newburyport. Bill, if you could throw up that first slide, I'll just run through them and just gently ask for the next, if that's okay.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Just give me a moment here to get my bearings here with this. Let's see, we have, you have the open here and sharing the screen. Okay, I think you'll see it now. Can everybody see that?
Yes, very good. Thank you very much.
Great.
All right, if we could go to the next slide, please.
Okay.
Again, good evening. I'm Douglas DeShane, representing Andy Morley and Donna Dodson, who are our clients, my clients. They are the owners of the property of one twenty-three Summer Street and they run the art studio as proposed. We do have this evening a plot plan survey that was done by Endersec Land Surveying. They are not here on the meeting, but I did want to mention that they did provide the plan that we have this evening. So if we go to the next slide, please. So as was previously stated, we are seeking a special permit for an accessory use under section ten point four special permit of the town's protective zoning bylaws. We are specifically seeking a special permit to allow for a trade shop art studio as an accessory use under section three point two point five of the town's bylaws. A trade shop is defined as a builder, carpenter, mason, painter, plumber, tinsmith, upholsterer, machinist, or other craftsman who lives and maintains a home on the premises or building may use said home or building thereon in connection with his trade by annual special permit from the Board of Appeals. So as I said, my clients are proposing to request, are requesting a special permit to run a trade shop, which is technically an artist's studio. So.
You went too fast there, Bill.
Yeah, I think you missed one, Bill. They, oh, there you go. Thank you. So I did want to give the board an opportunity to see the property that I'll be discussing as we move forward. As you will see to the left, the tan structure with the sculptures is the home at one twenty-three Summer Street. And the brown single car garage adored building in the back is the barn where the proposed art studio is proposed for activity. If we could slide to the next. This just give you a quick little aerial overview. We've marked the Morley Dodson home with the orange dot and you can see the light brown roof is the artist's studio. You can see that my clients have solar panels to the back of their property. But it also gives you a good perspective to see the neighbors to the right. You'll see one is closer to the street and then there's one set back. And then the neighbors to the left, there's a single house that abuts us on that side. If we could jump to the next slide. Great, all right. So this is that plan, that survey. This is a very recent survey. And as you can see, it does identify the house at one twenty-three as well as the barn. The lot we are located on is just under a share, just a a small amount under one acre in size, but it is a good sized lot for the area. I do want to point out in the lower right-hand corner of our lot, you will see there is a, it's labeled passageway per land court document number one four five four five eight. And that is an access easement area for both the, as I believe, the Hart Tarniff property, which is located on Summer Street, as well as the Shrew property, which is located to the back. So this is actually a passageway easement area over my client's property that provides access to the properties to the right in the rear. I do want to point out that roadway, because I'm going to show you some pictures in a little bit to show you that the impact of that roadway on our proposed trade shop. Before we go to the next slide, I do just want to give you a very quick overview of what my clients do, and that is they are artists who create sculptures and artwork from primarily from wood, sometimes with some ceramics or other media attached, but for the most part the sculptures and artwork are derived from wood products. They have no employees. They have no full-time or part-time employees. They run the shop themselves. They do, however, rarely hire an hourly laborer who might come over to help them with a particular task or to help them in moving or shipping out a piece of, of equipment. But that usually entails a couple of hours, so they might have to hire someone for an hour or two to come give them a hand, but they do not have any employees full or part-time. They do, however, on occasion take in unpaid interns, you know, generally students who are interested in the arts and interested in what Donna and Andy do. And so they are kind enough to share their, their studio as well as their experience and knowledge with interns and students who are looking to get into the arts. They do not sell or display their work to the public at this location. Rather, their are, their their pieces are sold in galleries both across this country as well as internationally. So there is no coming and going of clients or, or anyone looking to sell, excuse me, to buy or look at any of the artwork. They do produce a limited number of pieces each year. Each is an amazing, one-of-a-kind piece of art. They are not mass manufacturing or mass producing, as I think some people have indicated. This is, in fact, not true. These are one-of-a-kind, limited number of pieces in a given year. The only commercial activity that is occurring on the property is really the creation of the artwork that is to be sold elsewhere or pieces that are put on commission. In terms of the physical activity, it's certainly that of an art studio as opposed to a manufacturing company. So if we could hop to that next slide, please. So as the board is well aware, in order to qualify for this special permit, there is a very comprehensive and standard criteria that the board must find and consider in in issuing this permit. As you know, it's only, the special permit granting authority should only be granting this permit upon its written determination that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or to the neighborhood. Will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or to the neighborhood. And that in considering that criteria, the board is supposed to look at a number of specific factors. And I've listed those here. And what I'd like to do is walk through each one of them. And how it applies to our particular project. So if we could just scan on to the next slide, please, Bill. Thank you very much. So the first one is uh, first standard of review. Criteria for a special permit, um, is that of considering the social, economic or computer, community needs. That are served by the proposal. In this case, the use will certainly contribute to Maine's vital arts community. Ms. Dodson and Mr. Morley are extremely successful and are internationally recognized in their field. As artists, they are actively involved in Maine's community and in the arts community there. Um, their business and they personally have been a cultural draw to the town. And they have timelessly supported the local made art community, both in physically participating. But as well as, you know, um. Showing people outside of the town, uh, actually outside of this country that uh, Maine does have. A place in the art world. Um. The town has actually in its master plan encouraged. Um, some of the goals of your master plan are to encourage pu- public art through the town and find ways to encourage local artists. And also, and more importantly, and I think more germane to this application is develop a cultural plan. To create a vision to strengthen Maine's arts community and its cultural assets. So the town early on recognized that. Uh, becoming an arts and cultural center is actually an economic driver. Uh, and that it will contribute to Maine's social and economic stability. So. Um, the art studio proposed by my clients clearly. Will contribute significantly to the economic and social atmosphere of the town. Um, and uh, will provide community, satisfied community needs with respect. To this goal of increasing and improving on their arts, uh, cultural arts center. Um, another thing to look at is traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Uh, this one is pretty clear cut for us. We have no employees. We have no sales from this location. We're looking at four to eight significant deliveries a year. Those deliveries, you know, uh, generally entail. A piece being moved out or a piece being moved back from a show. Um, and they only take about an hour, an hour and a half to move the materials in and out. Um, as you'll see from the plan, we have ample, more than ample off-street parking. Um, for any number of cars, ten or twelve easily. Uh, within the gravel uh, parking area. And of course, uh, we do not create. Uh, any unduly impacts to traffic or affect roadways. In any uh, manner in terms of level of service. Um. This, this proposed art studio just doesn't produce traffic of any significance. Um, with respect to the adequacy of utilities and other public services. Um, the proposed studio does not negatively impact utilities or public services. In fact. It has very little impact on them at all. Um, my clients actually produce their own electricity on site. Through their solar panels, um, and in fact, produce more electricity than they use in their, in their studio. There is certainly no water or sewer use caused. Uh, by this art studio that is beyond normal residential uses and levels. Uh, there's no extreme use of water in their sculpting. And uh, where we only have two people living on the property and. Participating in the studio, the impacts on your water and sewer systems are certainly minimal. Uh, and compared to most uh, residential uses. So uh, this use will not. Unreasonably strain your utilities or other public services. Um, with respect to neighborhood character and social structures. Summer Street, as we know, is a major thoroughfare. And in fact, has historically had a number of home occupations and accessory businesses over the years. I do actually understand that this particular property of one twenty-three. Uh, Summer Street was at one time used for some scrap recycling business. Um, it was an antique shop. They were doing commercial boat and car storage down below. Um, so in addition to a, a history of businesses in the area. Uh, certainly a history of businesses on this particular lot. Um, physically, the property has dramatic, been dramatically improved upon and restored by my client, clients. However, as you recall from the pictures we just saw, and I'll, I'll show another one shortly. Um, it does not appear from uh, the street or from anyone walking by that there is any kind of business. Here, uh, in any event, and it looks ex- exactly like the other bonds and garages in the area. So. In walking by and looking at the property, I don't think uh, many people would even recognize. Uh, that there's an art studio uh, being utilized in the area. As I said before, we have no employees, no sales on site. We have minimal onsite deliveries. Uh, and so we do not expect the level of activity to uh, adversely impact the neighborhood character. Um, our activity blends into the neighborhood, and as I said earlier, is generally invisible uh, to passersby. Um, in terms of impacts on the natural environment. Uh, as I said, you know, there was previously a scrap recycling business out there. Uh, my clients have remu- moved every aspect of that or any traces of any. Any junk on the property and have restored that, those areas back to their natural uh, condition. Um, they have spent a lot of time and energy removing vines and planted. Uh, removing invasive vines and have planted. And save native species. They've added rain gardens and they have added bee friendly plantings. With respect to the structures, they've added gutters and drains to address groundwater recharge to make sure that. Water's getting back into the grounds as quickly as possible. Um, as I said, they do produce their own electricity in, for the studio and their home. Um, they have constructed the uh, the barn in reconstructing the barn. They have, um. They have made it energy efficient. Um, so overall, uh, they have made, actually made significant improvements. In terms of the natural environment and have taken steps to protect, protect and enhance that environment. Uh, to the art, during the operation of their studio. The use will not negatively impact the natural environment. We do not have. Toxic materials or odors that are being discharged. We don't store uh, toxic materials. Uh, we do, however, store paints and stains. But I will say those are the same stains and paints that we use in our homes. Uh, for painting uh, products and for staining. So they are using um, typical residential. Uh, paints and stains uh, for the most part, and they are stored. Uh, in a um, acceptable manner, and they do not keep quantities beyond that. Which you would normally find in a residential uh, structure. Uh, the last uh, consideration for our review, criteria for the special permit. Uh, Bill, if we could move on to that next slide. Uh, is uh, consideration of the potential fiscal impacts. Including the impacts on town services, tax base and employment. Um, I think we talked, I talked a little, uh, just a few minutes ago about town services. Um, other than the two people living here, the activities proposed on the site. Will not um, impact or be detrimental to town services in general. In fact. In terms of a residential structure with the studio, uh, they probably using less. Uh, have less impact on town services than most uh, full-sized families. Um, with respect to impacts, finite fiscal impacts on the town, tax base. Um, the home value. Um, on one twenty-three as a result of all the work that the Mormons have done in, in developing the studio. Uh, has increased. That has uh, resulted in an increase in, in. The, the value of neighbor properties. As you know, when anyone improves a property in a neighborhood, that reflects. Um, well on other homes in the neighborhood and by the Morley, Marlin and Dodson. Improving their structure and their natural environment have added value, again, not only to their home. But also to the neighborhood, which results in an increase in the tax base, an increase in revenue for the town. Obviously, uh, in operating the studio. Uh, my clients would also be liable to pay all local and state taxes associated with that activity. So that too will uh, result in an increase in revenue uh, for the town. As I said, no significant impacts on town services. Um, we have no employees, so I can't say that we are, will, will contribute to the employment base, however. Um, my clients have contributed uh, both artwork time and studio time to the town and to the local art community. While we have no employees, the activities of the studio. And the recognition of the study, studio has certainly contributed. To the greater art community and to the recognition of the town of Maine as an art and cultural center. Uh, as people recognize Maine for its art and cultural access, assets. That certainly will draw both people and businesses to town. People will want to live in this kind of environment. And that will result in a very positive fiscal and employment impact. For the town of Maiden. As Maine becomes a better place to live, more people want to live here and they want to work here. So, um, this is certainly, um, going, this business and its activities will certainly have a positive. Impact both fiscally, uh, um, with respect to the tax base and employment uh, for the town. Um, I would at this time, if we go to the next slide, Bill, I, I just want to touch base on uh, neighbors. Um, we have received, as you know, you have received numerous letters. Of support for the project. You have also received a number of um, letters in opposition to the project. Um, however, I, I'm talking specifically about the complaints that have been filed. Uh, with the building inspector that has led to uh, at least one letter back in. Two thousand sixteen and then as we know, uh, a cease and desist order uh, recently. Um, those complaints, as I understand it, have been limited to our two neighbors to the east. And for the most part, have been unsubstantiated complaints about loud noises, traffic and odors. I have not received any information that the building inspector in, in responding to these complaints. Has ever himself uh, experienced or seen uh, any of the activities that are being complained about with effect to noise, traffic or odors. However, I don't know that in two thousand twenty-one, uh, representative of the Board of Health went out in response to a claim. Of, of such activities, noise, traffic and odors. And in fact, as I, I hope, um, the board has read his report. Uh, he reported that in fact, um, he found none of that occurring on the site. Um, and again, on the very day that it was complained about. And that, um, in fact, what he did find was Andy and Donna out in the yard, um, cutting up some bamboo. For one of their, um, uh, pieces of art. And um, the inspector uh, noted that uh, they didn't, they weren't creating any noise that was obnoxious or. Or um, overly loud. Um. We, my clients in, in actually designing this studio. Did so to address the noise and activity that would occur in the building and to protect uh, the neighbors from it. Um, if you recall, to the right of the garage door as you're facing the, the studio. Uh, to the entire right of that door and for the length of the building, there is an eight foot wide. Uh, storage and buffer space between the outside wall. And the inner wall of the studio. So there's essentially an eight foot wide. Uh, storage area that acts as a buffer to our neighbors to the east. Um, they have replaced all of the windows in the shop with sound resistant low argon thermal paint windows. Uh, they have put six inches of foam insulation between the studs. And an additional two inches of hardened foam board. Outside on the studs, you know, on the inner wall. The ceilings have ten inches of foam insulation plus the two inch foam board. And the floors um, have eight inches of foam insulation. So they have done everything they can. To insulate and buffer the studio from the outside world. And including with respect to their closest neighbors, they've got this eight foot. A storage area to act as yet another buffer. Um, they do do some limited outdoor work with a chainsaw. Uh, they have to. Uh, remove some of the larger wooden pieces from a particular sculpture. Uh, they do use a chainsaw. Um, I understand they do have a gas chainsaw and a, a um, electric chainsaw, however. Um, that chainsaw work is uh, very limited. Um, and, and speaking with my clients, they're talking about a half dozen times a year. That they have to do any significant chainsaw work outside. Uh, and when it's done, it's generally no more than two hours of work at any given time. So it's not like they're running their. Chainsaws um, constantly. Um, certainly the amount of outdoor chainsaw work is consistent with anybody. At all who uh, cuts and, and uses firewood. Um, so a couple hours of chainsaw activity, um, is, is done, but it is done outside in. Uh, during work, normal work hours. As I said, I, at least I, I have not received any information. Uh, from the building inspector or the board of health inspections. That shows that there was actually any of the excess noise or odors. Uh, that the neighbors have um, complained about. Um, and in fact, as you'll know, um, in addition to the letters in opposition. Um, we have re- received, um, what's probably close to a couple of dozen. Uh, letters of support, including a number of letters of support from people. Who are, are living or have lived um, on Summer Street, uh, in close proximity to the Morleys. And, and Dodsons. And um, in fact, in their letters, they noted that they did not experience, in fact, a one particular note. Uh, about a right next door said that in the, the six or seven years they lived next door, they didn't experience any of the. Noise or the odors or any of the other things that, um, at least some of the neighbors complaining about. So. We seem to have a mixed bag of, of information being presented to the board. Uh, and to the town with respect to the noise and what's going on out there. But. I do want to just reiterate that, um, you know. To the extent that there's been inspections by anyone from the town, um, there's been no evidence of, of those things occurring. Um, so there's no record of that. Um, if we could go to the next picture, I'll just run through a couple of pictures to. Highlight what I talked about. So here is, it's on the left side. Here's the barn, uh, that window to the right, actually. Um, uh, that, it, that down that entire side of the, of the building is a, is the eight foot storage. So as you can see, it creates. A buffer to our neighbors here to the right. Also, you can see the pathway that I pointed out on the plan that is the. Easement over my client's property to get to the back property of the shrews. If we go to the next picture, um. This actually, that red flag is actually the lot line. Uh, separating uh, my clients uh, from their neighbors to the right. And as you can see, there is a significant amount of vegetation. Uh, trees and shrubbery that has been allowed to grow, uh, to create a, a. A um, buffer between the Hart Tardif property there. Um, and my client's driveway and barn. If we could go to the next slide, please, Bill. So here's looking down that roadway and I believe the barn we start to see now in the back. Uh, belongs to the folks that live in the back, the shrews. Uh, I'm sure I'll be corrected if I'm wrong. But what I wanted to point out is this, this roadway used to also be used by my clients. To drive along the uh, edge of their garage and park in the, in the garage in the back. There's doors under. However, um, in order to limit the activity. So close to the neighbors, my clients have eliminated that driveway. They now have to access their, the back of the barn from over their lawn. And as you can start to see, and I think the next picture will show it closer. Uh, Mike, there it is. Thank you very much. My clients have actually, um. Uh, put in a vegetated buffer, very thick vegetated ba- bamboo buffer. Which provides a solid screen between the back end of the barn. And our properties, you know, our neighbors to the right. Um, not only does that create an incredibly efficient. Uh, uh, buffer, but my clients can also harvest some of this material uh, for their artwork. If we could go to the next slide, please. Uh, and this is just a, now, now we're standing behind the barn. you can see where the driveway used to come around the barn. That's no longer utilized and you can see where the the buffer has been built. Bill, if you go to the next slide, I'll try and get through these quick. This is now looking down the property line to the rear and again, a very solid buffer here. You can't see the the shrew property or the heart tarted property from any of this area in the back. And I suspect they can't see the back of the barn either. I think there's only one or two more, Bill. This is now from the backyard looking across at the shrew property. And you can see that the the end of the the bamboo buffers there, and then we start a buffer of considerable sized trees as well as where where the, as you move to the back of the yard, there's another row of trees and 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 plants that have been buffered to create a buffer. Certainly, the buffer is is beneficial to my clients in that, as you can see, the the back of the structure next door is somewhat unsightly in need of repair. And yet, you know, so in providing them a buffer to our property, we're also providing a buffer to that structure, which is beneficial. And I think this is, oh, that's just a close up of the the barn that my clients look at every day. And last but not least, I believe, is a picture from the backyard. Oh, I'm sorry. This is from the backyard looking at our neighbors to the west. As you can see, there is fencing and plantings and and some bamboo artwork that has been placed as a buffer. But please understand, these homes are actually on the opposite side of my client's home and farther farthest away from the the barn structure. Truly believe this is the last picture. And this is just a picture from the backyard looking to the barn on the left where the studio is and the back of my client's home. As you can see, they have a pretty expansive backyard area where they do occasionally do some work or enjoy their lawn like everyone else. So if we could move to the last two slides, as the board is well aware, in considering the criteria for granting the special permit, considering all the aspects of it, the board is also allowed to consider conditions which could either address concerns of neighbors or concerns that that the board might have about the operation of the business. My clients are certainly more than reasonable in accepting conditions that would help provide comfort to our neighbors and to the town that we will operate within a set of conditions that will help to minimize any impacts to the neighbors or to the town. And in fact, my clients would like to have asked me to propose to suggest to the board some of the types of conditions that you can consider and the types of conditions that my clients would certainly be willing to live by, provided they do give the neighbors and and the town comfort. First of all, one of the things that's suggested in the bylaw is screening of the structures. Well, as I think we've shown you, where is screened as we can be? I I don't even think there's room to grow anything more back there. I think one of our neighbors in their opposition letter mentioned that, geez, we used to have a beautiful view across their lawn and now we look at a vegetated buffer. Well, the purpose of the vegetated buffer was so that you wouldn't, you know, you'd be screened from the barn and from the activity. So you know, we 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 believe we've provided more than adequate screening. However, if the board has some suggestions of where it might be enhanced or improved, my clients are certainly willing to listen to that. Another condition that we see in these types of permits is a limit on the size, number of occupants or employees, the method of our hours of operation and the extent of the facilities or operating characteristics of the use. My clients would propose to continue to run the business without full or part time employees. They would, however, like the opportunity to occasionally hire an hourly helper. And certainly, one of the most important things to them in running this business is they be allowed to continue to teach and accept voluntary interns and students so that they can pass on their experience and the love of the arts. They would like to be able to utilize power tools inside their building between seven and seven. I understand that this is the allowed hours of construction within the town. And it was suggested to my clients by the building inspector some number of years ago that they should keep their operations to seven to seven. They are more than willing to commit to that and accept that as a condition. However, they do want recognition that there will be limited outdoor activities where they'll need to use that chainsaw. It will also be done only during work hours. And again, two to three hours at the longest duration, they would even be willing to 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 accept a condition that limits those activities. But I I do want to remind the board that there's nothing that would present, prevent somebody from cutting firewood on their property and cutting trees and running their chainsaws pretty much all day in a residential area. So we're actually just looking for the ability to use them on a limited basis and would commit to those restraints. As I mentioned earlier, my clients do participate in many of the town's art-related activities. They have in the past and would like to continue to be able to open the studio. But two or three times, that's all. We would take a limitation. I'd like to be able to open the studio two or three times a year. Again, during normal business hours and including the town-sponsored activities. I believe the town does sponsor an open studio day once a year or artworks has some kind of a studio day and my clients have participated in that and like would would like to be able to continue to do so. But again, they would limit those open studio times to two or three times a year if that would be acceptable. I I do want to point out, and I think some of the letters both far and against the project have mentioned this. My clients do not work on this site every day. In fact, they don't necessarily work every week and and in fact, they don't work all year round. They travel extensively with their work and on their educational endeavors. So they do a lot of their work offsite in other states and in fact, in other countries. So it is actually a limited period of time throughout the year that my clients are at the studio in any event. So this is not like your typical trade shop that is essentially, you know, open, you know, every week and throughout the year. So in terms of activities on the site, it is somewhat more sporadic here and of of differing durations. Another condition that boards can consider is regulation of the number of design and location of access drives or other traffic features. Well, I I think this is really intended for larger scale operations that probably have trucks or other equipment coming and going from their site on a daily basis or on a regular basis, as I've said, except for a couple of, a few deliveries and and the removal and return of pieces, art pieces. We don't have regular deliveries and certainly don't have regular pickup of materials. So really, we're not anticipating any traffic or parking issues. We've never had any and never expect any as we have no retail hours, no regular employees and no regular deliveries. In fact, this facility certainly does not generate more traffic than a normal household and certainly not any more than a normal household with one or two teenagers on board. So just tell my two clients, and then there's no real traffic associated with the business. So not going to have any impacts on traffic or travel. And let me just get through the last of these. Another condition that has been considered provision of greater number of off-street parking spaces. Again, we have a huge parking area. We don't need to create any more off-street parking spaces whatsoever. Although the board could have a condition that at no time could any cars associated with the studio park on the street. Because we will never have to, to be quite honest. Limitation on the number, location, type, size, signs or illumination. My clients would like to put up a small, very small sign. In fact, they would like the sign to read the mythmakers, Donna Dodson and Andy Morley. They are proposing an eighteen by thirty inch sign, which is three point seven five square feet. And all it's going to say is the mythmakers, Donna Dodson and Andy Morley. I will remind the board that in fact, in a residential zone, my clients are allowed by right to have a square of sign of up to four square feet in a residential zone. So what they're asking for is not only allowed under your bylaw, but they're actually proposing to be smaller than it can be. Limitation on construction activities. Well, we're not proposing any construction. We're not proposing any heavy truck activity. So I'm not really sure what kind of limitations my clients could suggest or or accept as we really, that's not really applicable. And lastly, as you know, what's very important here is that this is an annual license. Meaning that if the board finds finds that the that they are, my clients are entitled to a special permit, that really just gives them one year. And during that year, it will give both the the town and the neighbors and and everyone else interested an opportunity to see how the studio is operated, whether in fact it is operated in in conformance with the conditions that the board might might choose to apply. And that within that year, we will have to be back to the board and to ask for a re you know, to have our permit extended. And and I think that is really the best regulation or requirement for monitoring that you can have. Your building inspector, your Board of Health are still able to oversee and and in in review the property and the the activity in the the art studio. They will respond, as we know, to neighbor complaints. Although I think if there was a neighbor complaint after issuance of a special permit, the building inspector would likely come out to see for himself whether in fact there is any violation of those conditions. And as now, as we know, he has the right to either fine or withhold their permit. So my clients will be highly motivated to make sure that they work within the four corners of any permit with any conditions. And I do think there is already a mechanism in place for that to be monitored by the building inspector and the Board of Health. And most importantly, the fact that we will be back before you in a year to see if we, in fact, ran the studio in accordance with any permit and conditions you might be willing to offer. So I don't think there's a need for any special monitoring associated with this. So with that, thank you very much for the opportunity to get that all out. I am here and available to answer any questions and thoughts you have. My clients are also available if there are any technical questions about the operation of the business. Or their intentions regarding that. They're here to answer them. So with that, thank you again for the time and we're happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you very much. That was a very, very informative presentation. So, Bill, before we get into questions and so forth, I wanted to check and see if either Peter or Jerry have signed on from the from the board. Ah, there's Jerry. That's good. Thank you very much.
I have not seen Peter. He didn't be on time, but okay, so we still have Paige and Brad on. So right now, if now there's the option if the board pleases and there was, for whatever reason, a continuance and they wished to bring the regular members rather than the alternates, that could be done via Mullins if it is deemed necessary. But as of right now.
We have, we have a full board right now.
That's right.
Good. So where do we begin? I was jotting down a few questions myself. But I would just wanted to reflect attorney to Shen's about you were commenting on a lot of people speaking or writing notes in in favor and then there were some issues with opposition. And where where I'm getting a little bit confused is it sounds like there's very few issues at present. Were there issues in the past that caused your clients to change what they do? Or are these issues from the past, in your opinion, overblown?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think I I honestly have to say a combination of the two. Because my clients, before they even started this studio, started working in the studio, met with the building inspector, discussed what it meant to be a studio, what kind of activities were allowed and they moved forward with the understanding that this was really intended to be more of a you know, as much a hobby workshop as anything. But that they were creating art and I think fortunately, in the time that they've been in Mated, their 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 business has been very successful. But I do also know that in the course of previous complaints by neighbors, again, some of which my clients believe are unfounded, they have been cognizant of people's concerns, especially with respect to noise and when they're making noise. So they have, as I mentioned, they've designed, redesigned the barn to be as soundproof and as effective as possible at keeping the noise in. They've done most of the noisy work with the exception of the occasional chainsaw inside. They tend to do the quieter things outside like cutting bamboo, wrapping bamboo and painting and finishing. Because I mean, I think we all have to agree that's much more enjoyable outside than it is necessarily in a closed in place. But, Mr. Chairman, they have been over the years and including up till this past year when there was another complaint and the building inspector again, you know, certainly doing his job, but without independent verification of the claims, did issue a cease and desist, telling my clients that they couldn't make excessive noise. You know, give off any fumes, noxious odors and to keep things quiet at night. And I think they've done that as they always have. But they've just tried to be even more sensitive about it. And so you know, I think the building inspector, at least between nineteen fifteen, two thousand fifteen and two thousand twenty-two, believed that my clients did respond to his requests and did modify their activities because they did not hear again from the building inspector until just recently when the neighbors brought up some complaints, which my clients do contest the the validity of some of them. So I think it's a combination. I think it's partially that perhaps some of the complaints have been overblown and could be certainly attributed to, you know, neighbor disagreements. But I also think my clients have continued to do everything they can to try and address those complaints. And as I said, up until this past year, we hadn't heard from the building inspector for for seven years or six years. So I think they've been doing something right. But whatever it is, there was a recent incident that it caused this this, you know, the building inspected. you know, the building inspected issued the cease and desist. And I will tell you that in working with the building inspector on that, um, he did indicate to my clients that they they're, they were required to seek that this special permit because what they were doing did fall under the category of a trade shop. Um, and therefore, um, that's why we're here, Mr. Chairman. And again, um, in keeping with that and uh attempt to really try and work with the neighbors and to resolve the issues, as I just ma- finished saying, my clients are willing to accept a very serious and comprehensive set of restrictions to ensure that they don't uh they don't step outside the boundaries of the permit.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Uh, board members, uh, questions? Leslie?
Yes.
Leslie Bryant, excuse me.
Yeah. I am interested in hearing um what the particularly the most recent complaint from the neighbors has been.
Well, um, Mr. Chair, if I could through you.
Please, yes, please, Doug.
I do have a copy. And I know the board does as well. Um, um, in this letter dated February seventh uh from uh the building inspector at Mr. Asman, he states that um uh, the building partner notified you in August of two thou- I'm kind of going to paraphrase for you.
Sure.
In August of two thousand sixteen concerning the level of activity at your studio, which was beyond that which would be expected from a byright home occupation. Uh, subsequently, events and related traffic issues abated, but the devil, the level and duration of noise generated while you were working in your studio continued. Uh, and uh, the rest of it talked about what happened in two thousand sixteen, but it says current complaints have included excess noise both inside and outside the studio throughout the day, early morning commercial deliveries and pickups, noxious fumes, possible employees or interns and traffic from clients.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, again, we we have no idea where complaints about traffic from prime, excuse me, traffic from clients is coming from um our commercial, early morning commercial deliveries. I'm not saying there were never any, but these aren't a daily, weekly, or even monthly activity. They're you know, six to eight times a year. So so based on that, uh, the building inspector said that it uh in considering this as a byright home inspection, um, they shouldn't detract, the activity shouldn't detract from the neighborhood or derogate from the residential nature. And he says, in his opinion, the business activities are are not compliant with a byright use. You know, it's just not an allowed byright, no restrictions, but rather we needed a special permit for the uh act- the the activity in the S-one zoning district and that we were technically a trade shop and that therefore we needed to apply for a uh special permit as a trade shop. But understand, um, he, the building inspector did not say that our level of activity or the noise, whether we were generating it or not, was uh outside uh the realm of a special permit activity, but rather that it just wasn't quite in line, in his opinion, with the home occupation. So he's, he said we need to ratchet it up and get a special permit. And why would he do that? They do that, and people do that, and I see this every day, because a special permit gives the town control and oversight. Whereas a home occupation, you're sort of free to do whatever you do as long as you stay in the, you know, sort of the realm of those activities. The building inspector didn't think our activities were quite within that realm and felt that we would be better served by seeking a special permit so that this board could consider the use and put any necessary conditions it felt reasonable to ensure the neighbors, you know, that the neighbors were being addressed.
Thank you.
Well.
Leslie, anything else?
Yes. So I recall that there was a letter from somebody um stating, well, from the neighbor, from a neighbor on the right-hand side, I presume, stating that there were in fact nauseous fumes from the studio that were in there, that had drifted into their house, let's say. Um, and yet it stated that there are no materials being used that are like toxic or um one or the other of those.
We are using paints and and maybe uh Donna or Andy would, might want to comment on this, but I know they're using paints, uh acrylic paint and oil-based paints, um, as well as um latex paints. And they're using oils and 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 clear coats, like I would assume s- some type of polyurethane. They're 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 not the most um pleasant odors. Uh, but as we all know, anyone who's ever painted a room or or polyurethane to deck, um, you know, you you get paint odors for a while until it dries. Uh, but again, the types of odors and materials being used are the same materials we use in our homes.
Mm-hmm. Donna, Andy is that?
I just had my house painted.
I'm just going to interrupt and just, I'm going to mute um anyone who is is not speaking. So just want to reiterate that.
Okay, I'm all set.
All right. Thank you, Leslie. Uh, Brad, you have any questions?
Um, yes, I have a a few questions, if I might. There, there has been a lot of complaints about uh smells and noises and things like that. Um, and in fact, um, that was one of the reasons why there's a cease and desist order. So you had an opportunity from the building inspector or the building commissioner um to comply. And he made it very clear and concise, uh, leaving nothing to the imagination that you're in violation and that you need to, um, and that he would be taking steps to um shut you down if you didn't comply, and you chose not to comply, and you got shut down. So what makes um what can you say to the board that would make us think that if we impose condition, a special conditions on you um in the future that you would comply with them? Because in the past, you have not done so.
Well, um, first of all, I I, as I mentioned, there was a timeframe between two thousand and sixteen, when the building inspector first brought the complaints to my client's attention. Um, and most of those, um, most of those complaints, if you look at that, uh, e- even the two thousand twenty-two letter, and he's reiterating that that there was um, the complaints were about events, traffic, um, and that those issues were abated. But the work in the studio continued. Now, the building inspector told us, didn't say we couldn't work in the studio. What he said is we could not generate noise above the, you know, the town's noise levels, and we couldn't, you know, create noxious fumes. But he didn't say we couldn't paint things and polyurethane and so again, i- it really comes down to a characterization of the activities by the neighbors. My clients, in fact, feel that after working with the building inspector in two thousand sixteen, they did comply with everything they, he asked for. They, they, they did not hold any further social, you know, events or activities at the studio. They didn't do any of that. But they continued to make their art, and they continued to do that for seven years, for six years, before the next complaint was lodged. And quite frankly, the building inspector, I think at that point, and again, he doesn't say in his letter whether he verified any of it. Although we did have a report from the board of health that when they went out there, there was no odors or noise. But he said that, you know, I think he, he took the the complaints for 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 verbatim and and said, okay, if this stuff is still going on, you need to cease and desist from doing.
And that's exactly what ha- and that is exactly what happened, isn't it?
Right. But I mean, they're still making their art. They're still.
After, after, after there's a cease and desist order? They're still making their art?
Well, no, not since this, this two thousand twenty-two cease and desist.
So we're, so we're, we're talking about the current.
All activity.
We're talking about the current, the current time.
Oh, yeah, no, this, uh, they're not doing anything. They, they, they stopped everything and they, you know, we immediately filed for this special permit.
Okay. So, so I go back to saying, why would we um expect that they would comply with the conditions of special conditions that we might impose on them? Um, if in the past they have shown that they would not follow the conditions that uh that the um building commissioner had already stated.
Well, uh, Ms. Schultz, I believe my clients would tell you that after the two thousand sixteen discussion with the building inspector, they did comply. That they're not generating noxious odors, that they're not creating any noise above and beyond, you know. Now, I mean, understand the tools that are being used here. We're trying table saw, radial arm saw, sanders, drills, circular saw, hand mallets, carving tools, files, sanding paper. I mean, I have every one of those tools in my own shop.
But the fact, the fact is that the building commissioner shut it down. You had the opportunity to prevent that from happening, yet it didn't happen.
They didn't initially issue a cease and desi- desist order in two thousand sixteen.
But they have, but they have reason.
In two thousand twenty-two, they did, and my clients have stopped all activities.
Okay.
But when they were given a cease and desist.
And now they want to start, and now they want to start up again, and then we might end up back exactly where we were before.
No, they want to start up again with a special permit that will define what they do and where they do it and how they do it.
But the enforcement mechanism is the building commissioner. And they've already defied the building commissioner. So I don't see that issuing a special permit.
I'm sorry, where did they deny the building inspector?
No, I didn't say deny it. I said they defied the building inspector. The building inspector, the building inspector said, I believe it was a, a letter from two thousand sixteen, that said that if there's one more time, one more event of this, then you will, you'll be shut down. And then there was another one, and you were shut down. That's why there's a cease and desist order.
But that, that event was seven years later, and it's only on the word of one neighbor.
I have a feeling that when we get into the public comment, that there'll be more, there'll be more input into into that. I have other questions that I'd like to ask you about.
Sure.
That if it's all right. Is that, is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please, please, Brad. Uh, but before you get started, I I just want to remind folks of the time. I I want to go through this discussion, but it is already after eight thirty. I would say let's try to get as much information as we can by nine o'clock, and then we can run a continuance until our next meeting. Is that acceptable? Mr. Deschens?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, whatever, whatever the board wants.
Okay. Um, can you tell me what uh percentage of the house that is used um for your own personal use and not and not as part of the of the business that you have?
Uh, what was, what's?
The house, the house, the resident, residential only use of the house. I'm guessing that is is there, is part of that house used in 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 conjunction with the business?
Well, some of the pieces of art are in the house, but there's no physical, I I don't know, am I right? There's no physical work that occurs in the house.
Okay, but it's it's used for storage of the of the um, I thought it's parts of the house is used in conjunction with the business as well as the barn.
Well, I know. I mean, they, they display some of their own art in their own home, and that's all.
Okay, um, is there running water and um and bathroom facilities in the barn?
No.
No, okay. So, so as part of your business, you are using parts of your house for for the work that's being done. So if you had a, if you had a, an employee or a uh someone coming over to your, or a, a, an intern or another person coming over, they would use your house to use the bathroom. If they were having an eating area, they would use the house as part of the eating area. Is that correct?
I I I don't know about, I I'm I'm sure if they need to use the bathroom.
It's a very straightforward question. So my, my point is, is the, can you tell me what the square footage is of the barn? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, I, well, we have a um
Do you use, do you use the first floor of the barn for anything with the business?
Uh, there's a, uh, you being the lower level?
Yes, the lower level.
Yeah, there's a kiln, there's a kiln in the, in the lower level. Other than that, it's just storage.
Okay, okay, but it's used, the storage is used for part of the business.
Yes.
Okay, so, so basically what you have is you have a twenty-eight by forty-eight foot square foot area on two levels, and then you use much of the first level of your house as part of the business. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, I don't believe that the, due to the square footage that you're using of your entire property and of the barns there, that's really an accessory use. As your business is not really an accessory use or or secondary use. It seems to be it's more of a primary use. Okay, and that, that's that's all I have to say about that.
With all due respect, sir, I mean, it's my client's residence. They live there. They they live their life there. They sleep there, they eat there, they.
But they, but they also use it for part of their business as well.
Sure, they left their interns to use the bathroom. Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Um, does anybody work in the um, in the art studio um when you're off-site? Is there somebody always there?
No.
So there's, okay. Um, do you use any metal for your art pieces, your sculptures? Do metal fa- fabrication of anything? No? Okay, because I remember seeing some pictures of stuff that you had for the um the the UFO space down downtown. It looked like it was made of metallic substance. So you, so you, you don't do any metal fabrication whatsoever?
No.
That, that, that's what I wanted to find out. Um, and do you use any fiberglass or other special resins for any of your um, any of your work? Um, would, do you use um masonry-type stuff, you know, like a plaster pears or 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 that kind of material?
Yes, ceramics.
Ceramics, okay. All right. Um, so how many people at any given time would be on your site uh the most?
Two.
Oh, but what about, uh, you said that there are special um special times where you want to do shows there or?
No.
Um, that was, I I believe you said that, that during the town, when the town has um
Open studio night, yes.
Studio night, okay. So you more than, more than two people are going to be there at that time?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how many, how many people do you think that would be?
Guys, how many? Five to ten? And there's more than adequate parking.
I am just trying to get an accurate, I don't know, of what goes on here, because you say you have no employees and that nobody else shows up, but then you say that there's interns that show up. Um, so it's, it's kind of hard to tell, you know, what, what happens with, how many people you actually have there at any given time.
Uh, Donna, Andy, could you?
But thank you for that.
Could, could you give us a little insight into the quantity and the frequency of your interns? You need to unmute your, your speaker and Mr. Chairman. Is it okay if my clients answer that question?
By all means, like, let's clear things up and move on.
Sure. Thank you for the floor, Mr. Chair. Um, just to clarify, uh, the activity with the interns is um on an infrequent basis. At the most, it's perhaps one a year.
One a year for one day a year?
It's generally for a, like a semester.
Okay, so can you, can you unpack that a little bit for me, be more, a little more specific as to how much time this intern is spending during their semester?
Sure, it might, it usually runs for a semester, so they're, they're getting credits. And they're generally maybe working in our studio like five hours a week or something for, you know, a ten-week semester. Um, that would be a typical student internship.
And is that, is that five hours a week? Is that one day a week, or is that several?
It's usually spread over two or three afternoons.
Can I just, Brad?
But that's in the afternoons, right? It's not during, it's not during the evenings, hours or anything like that?
No, 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 nine, no, nine to five.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm I'm finished with my questions for now.
Great, thank you. Uh, who's next? Paige, you have any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I understand and I'm hearing that a lot of the materials, like the paints or the the polyurethane or some of the varnishes or other finishes and the equipment like the chainsaws, although a lot of those that are used are the same as those that we may have in our own garages or that homeowners may use just during the course of their maintenance. Um, but I I think my question is really looking at the frequency, because I think there's a difference between finishing a deck or taking down a tree limb that fell once or twice a year versus the more regular occurrence of these activities. So can you identify with the duration or frequency of of those outdoor uses, maybe like the chainsaw use and the the painting or use of the outdoor varnishes? I don't know, are we talking about maybe five times a year, or is it more along the lines of like thirty to a hundred times a year? Just some ballpark estimate would be helpful for me to understand.
Got to unmute Donna to answer that.
Thanks, Paige. That's a very, very good question. You know, this is so infrequent that it's a challenge to identify. Um, you know, if we're in the middle of a project, maybe I've got to bring a piece outside two or three times in a week to to work on it, to paint it or do something with it. Most of the time I do stuff indoors. The only reason I would do stuff outdoors is occasionally I use stuff that is messy, and it's a lot nicer to keep messy things outside of the studio. Because our studio is a very elegant and well-used space.
Okay. Um, and Mr. Chair, I have a few more questions, if I may.
Please.
Thank you. And then there was reference to foam insulation being used to provide some sound dampening effects. So I just wanted to clarify, is that beyond the insulation that's required by building code? Is that more than the minimally required amounts specifically to give this benefit, or is it just building code minimum?
No, I I don't think, I don't, I don't know if you even are required to insulate a, you know, a garage or a barn. Um, but if you do, you typically put insulation in between the joists as they, my clients have done. But they've gone beyond that and put in the two-inch hardcore foam panels, you know, as like wall coverings. Is that correct, Andy?
When we designed this space, we worked with incredible dedication to a low-impact, low-energy building, and we wanted to isolate the sound as best we could. We were introduced to the neighbors and we were aware of what kind of people they were. And we worked very hard to give them as much space as they wanted. They are very close to our property line. I respect that.
Thank you. And I just have two more questions. I'm a little confused about the bamboo. I've heard it referenced both as something that was used to provide visual screening, but also it sounds like it may be used in some of the art installations. Can you just elaborate on when it was planted and whether it was planted in response to concerns about visual screening?
Yes, it was planted as a visual screen. It's it's actually just kind of an ornamental grade bamboo. It's a lightweight. We we don't harvest it for our work. We do sometimes we prune it to keep it, you know, maintained neatly, and so sometimes our friends ask us for holes for their garden, and we've we've shared that with our friends.
Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. I I was my misunderstanding that you potentially use some of that bamboo in your work, because I saw you working with bamboo. Sorry. My mistake. So it was planted entirely for its visual barrier effects.
I thank you. That that's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Jerry, do you have any questions? On the move.
Yes, Paul, but Leslie, I've been watching Leslie wave her hand, and I think she wanted to ask her questions. You're not just waving towards all. Go ahead, Leslie.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
That's all right.
So a case we had just recently kind of made me think. I assume that you have smoke alarms in in your studio. Okay, good.
Now can Jerry go?
Do I have permission now, Leslie? I'm okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. I I only had one question, and I apologize for not knowing this particular answer. When we talk about noise and noise barriers, uh, one thing, I'm a safety engineer, so I do noise analysis for a lot of times for power plants or manufacturing plants. Uh, you know, neighbors will complain, we can hear the cooling towers running, we can whatever, and and they're right, they can. But there's also an ordinance that said a certain level of noise is allowed. So normally in towns, they allow anything that will go as as high as ten decibels of sound above uh, the norm average. So if you're in a your backyard, you're probably not hearing vehicles driving by, a truck, you're not next to a highway. So it's pretty quiet, might be thirty or forty decibels. So then when you do something, and that's what all your neighbors are looking at that same level. So when you run a chainsaw or anything else, and again, I understand it's intermittent. Uh, it's not once a week, every week of the year. Uh, but I would like to know, have we done as a town or has anybody or have you folks who are applying for the special permit done any noise sampling around your property to see what the noise levels in decibels are? Uh, because I I like looking at that for the legitimacy of a complaint. It's a technical legitimacy of a complaint rather than just it was loud. That was my one question, I'm sorry.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, no, we haven't, although I have to say in in talking with the board so far, in in light of the fact that we're certainly going to run out of time tonight, um, I would, you know, I will talk to my clients about the possibility of doing some just testing, but I think what might even be helpful to everyone would be if between this meeting and the next meeting, if the board could come out to see the facility and I could have my clients fire up their, you know, their noisiest machines inside. And we could let the board stand right outside and right next to the neighbor's house and let the facts and the truth be heard. And if it turns out we're over noise, then this board will have a basis for making a decision. On the other hand, if if we're able to show you that our noise is within limits, you would have a basis for another decision. But I I at this point, you know, I do know it's a he said, she said, and you know, um, I would highly suggest that the board will will make arrangements to have the board come out. Uh, the neighbors will be there, I presume, and we could fire up some tools. And we could also provide you some insight into the actual materials uh, that we're using for paint and stain and 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 we can come to the conclusion of whether or not they're toxic and, you know, creating gaseous clouds.
So I I appreciate that. That that's an idea I think we ought to explore and accept. Uh, we'll have to set up a schedule on when we can do that. But on on your paints and stains and whatever, uh, the question that comes to my mind is, do you have the safety data sheet available, or can you get it to explain what the odors and if they are hazardous, flammable, obnoxious smell, whatever?
Yes, we can get you those spec sheets on the materials. I'm I'm familiar with that, and we can do that.
So, um, I I had some questions as well. Um, I'm just trying to go through my notes here. Uh, the other board members, are you all set with questions for the moment? Let Leslie's raising her hand.
It's my understanding, and I I would love to be proved wrong on this, that Maynard no longer has noise bylaws, which is a great annoyance to me. But if somebody can find them, I would sure like to know about it.
That is correct. Leslie, the town uses Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection standards right now. There are no standards that are unique to the town. We defer to the state.
And so to build on Leslie's question, Bill, can you find what the the state rules are and be ready at the next meeting with that?
I can.
That would be very good. So I, yeah. I I think I'm I'm getting overwhelmed with information here. I've got some questions, but the the one that strikes me right now is outside versus inside activities. And if you've got the studio and you've got two levels of the studio, not seeing it, I'm just sort of speaking off the cuff here. Isn't there enough space inside to do your activities that you don't need to be outside? Attorney Duchesne or or the applicants?
Sure, I can I can respond to that. Thank you for the question. And the answer is yes, we we do probably ninety to ninety-five percent of our activity is confined to the studio.
Okay, and the stuff outside is, I heard messy. So messy has all sorts of connotations to it. If you spill a can of paint, that's really messy. But what kind of mess are you talking about that you need to do it outside?
One of the best pictures is me in a hazmat suit, you know, like one of those white Tyvek suits with my hair phone. Oh, no, I didn't have my hair phone. I had my dust protection on. And the reason I was doing that is because I was using, basically, it's like pastel chalk. It's a, it's a color, and I put on a an adhesive and I that's, I think it was water-based at that point. And then I apply this stuff and I rub it with a cloth until it doesn't get powdery anymore. And if I carry that into the studio, it makes a terrible mess of everything in my studio. So I tend to do it outside, you know, um, it's it's and then I take off all those clothes, so I don't have to mess up my own clothes.
Okay, thank you. So I I know there's a lot of people in the in the audience tonight. And I know a bunch of them are interested in speaking their mind or 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 sharing their insights. But I would like to postpone those discussions either for or in opposition to this until our next regularly scheduled meeting. And that I would like to continue this meeting uh, until that time. Attorney Duchesne, is that acceptable with you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it is.
And so, Bill Nemser, if you could tell us when that next regularly scheduled meeting is normally going to happen? Uh, take your mute off.
July twenty fifth would be our next regularly scheduled meeting.
And we would put this on the beginning of the agenda for that night. And hopefully we can schedule a site visit before that meeting. If we can find a common time to 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 do that, then I leave that to Bill to coordinate that.
Okay. I will take care of it. And to be clear, Mr. Chair, and really for the the audience, this hearing will remain open. This is strictly being continued. Nothing has been closed at this point.
That's right. Now, I I see a hand up here that he's he's out of sequence, but I will let Mr. Hart ask his question. If we can get him to unmute.
Yes, sir. I'm just, I don't understand that that they get the chance to present their whole thing and nobody gets to rebut anything while it's fresh in everybody's mind. Like, the the lawyers that we've hired to to come on don't get to a chance to present our side of of the case. Like, there's, this is just going to be wait a month to to take this back up.
That that is what I am proposing, yes, because it is nine o'clock now. It's, and I don't want to run this into the midnight hour.
How many visitors will they visit houses?
Okay.
So may I have a motion then to continue this? And I'm looking at either Leslie or Paige to make that motion.
Um, I'll make a motion to continue, oh, God, that is in my calendar, to continue tonight's meeting until July.
Twenty fifth is what Bill come.
Okay, July twenty fifth at seven o'clock.
All right, do I get a second from Paige?
We want to continue this hearing.
Yes.
Specifically.
Yes, we are continuing, Julia.
Yes, I continue this hearing.
Yeah, this.
She said continue the meeting. I just wanted to to be certain that we are continuing this this hearing.
Yes. We are continuing this hearing.
And it will be a remote hearing again.
Correct. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So we had five hands stick up, so that is continued. And so since it is nine o'clock in the evening, I guess we can call for an adjournment, right? Is that the correct term now, Bill?
It it is, but I have one more question. I I may have missed it, and I apologize if I did. Um, our second applicant, Leslie, the the dog training.
We need to continue that as well. Thank you.
Right.
Because we we lost her someplace in this electronic world.
I don't know if she's on now or not.
I don't think so.
Okay. But if it's the board's pleasure, you could continue them, and we will advise the the applicant to.
Try again next month.
Again, next one.
So I need a motion for that. Paige, you want to give that a shot?
Sure, I move that we continue the hearing for the special request of Leslie Zalansky to allow the home occupation of the dog training at the residence at Pine Hill Road to our next regularly scheduled meeting on July twenty fifth at seven P M., and it will be a remote hearing.
Thank you. Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, John seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we're all set with that, unanimous. And so now we can adjourn the meeting with those two continuances for next month. So do I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
And make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. That was unanimous as well. Thank you, everybody, for.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate your time.
And thank you for being patient with us. And I'm sorry, Michael Hart, about continuing this for another month, but we, it would be better to do that than to go on to midnight tonight.
Do will their attorney get a chance to to speak again for an hour and a half, or will people be able to actually talk next time?
I think the agenda for next time would be to hear from the public in favor and in opposition. And then we would deliberate.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the clarification.
Thank you. So with that, have a good evening.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you, everybody.